Okay, I'll be in door. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it looks like the first item today is general business of transient rental.
I think we'll do roll call first.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Chairman Glass?
It's been a while, yeah. It's been a while, it's happened.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Here.
Commissioner Say?
Here.
Commissioner Putnam?
Here.
Commissioner Romero?
Here.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'll do it from here just because we have a presentation. But first, I just want to say thank you to everybody for being able to adjust your schedule kind of on the fly and move this up to four o'clock. We advertised the meeting for five o'clock, so what we wanted to do was start at four o'clock so we can have an hour to have a conversation regarding the short-term rentals, so we can start really the one action item at five o'clock, which it was scheduled for, because our goal is to be out of here. Congressman Robert Garcia is coming in for a 5:30 town hall. We want to be out of here, they asked to use it, so this is the best we could do, adjust that schedule. And I will just run through what I have, and I'm not going to read the survey results to you because you have them there in front of you, it's for the first time. We're not really going to ask for any definitive decisions at all tonight. We really just wanted to have a discussion. You should have the transient rental, the City of Avalon transient rental survey. We also have copies out here. And then attached to that is, the second item is, this is just the hard data that we received from the company with all the narrative attached to it for the comments that people had an opportunity to make. So that's everything that the city has received, and those are out here publicly and we'll make those available also on the city website. So, I just want to go through this and point out that we started this survey December 1st. We had it open for about seven weeks. We extended it a little further than we initially had planned in order to allow, because of the holidays, allow more individuals to respond. We had 457 responses, which we thought was a solid, reliable number. We realized that you could take the survey, the same person could take it a second time, third time. There's nothing that restricted that. But with the 457 responses, we felt we were still getting a pretty good cross-section. And we have requested some data of whether or not they can tell whether the same person took it multiple times from the same computer device. And if that happens, when we get it back, we'll adjust accordingly. But, you know, we feel pretty confident in the responses we got because they're not really a surprise of what we were hearing from the community in the meetings that we had in the fall. As you can see, the vast, vast majority, 75% of the responders were full-time residents of the City of Avalon. Again, pretty much what we expected, that the residents are the ones that had the primary concern and primary point of view on these things. As we move through this, the way we're looking is at the top two, the full-time Avalon residents, and I rent my residence, and full-time Avalon resident, I own my residence. Those numbers are consistent, again, 75% is full-time Avalon residents, consistent with the first question. And, you know, you can see there's more renters than owners, again, not a surprise. But we were looking to make sure that these responses were pretty consistent with each other, which gives us a confidence level. And then the other one is just about 10% were identified as short-term rental owners. Again, that's about where our numbers are with our number of residential units and the number that we have identified that are licensed with the City of short-term rentals. It's about 10%, so we feel, again, that number is consistent with what we're experiencing. As we work through this, again, which the following describes you, this is just trying to get data from who's responding. And then, you know, we get into really the meat of the questions. And the first one being on a scale of zero unfavorable to 10 very favorable, general opinion of short-term vacation rentals. And what we did here is, the hard data has a zero to 10 ranking, but we took zero through three, put those in one group, we labeled them as unfavorable, and then the seven through 10, and put them as favorable. And what you see there is about 49% of the respondents were unfavorable view of short-term rentals, and 35% were on the other end categorizing them anywhere from seven to 10 as favorable. Again, probably not inconsistent with what we would have thought. The next question is, over the last five years, do you believe the number of active short-term rentals has increased in the City of Avalon? And the vast majority of residents or responders did believe that they have increased, and they have. I just think probably the number that they have has not been at the rapid rate that many people believe. What we have seen over the last five to 10 years is an increase, with a gradual increase, of anywhere from 10 to 15 maybe, in an average year. If you look back over the last 12 months, this planning commission has revoked more than it's granted. Now, we've had the moratorium since August, but even factoring that in prior, from January of last year until August or September, when the moratorium went into effect, you still, December and January of the prior year, you revoked more than has been granted. So, we've certainly been stable over the last 12 to 18 months, and we only have a handful that I would say are on a waiting list right now or queued up waiting to see what happens with the release of the moratorium. Donna, can you update me on that number, do we have less than five?
Less than five.
So, less than five that are waiting. And I certainly anticipated it would have been more than that by now. So now, when we get into, you know, the meat of the survey, that being rank the following list of topics by importance of what should be considered before imposing future short-term rental regulations. Our goal with this was to really get a feel to see where we were at as it relates to the community input that we had in our meetings in the fall. And we had on this 10 possible answers on these two pages. The first five, we have, if we consider, what you see there is the average response. So when you're ranking these one through five, you can see impacts on affordable housing averaged a 3.5. So that was almost across the board, the top four or five, everybody's response as an item of importance. Penalties for non-compliance with existing rules and regulations, establishing a citywide cap on the number of short-term rentals, were all, those three were all pretty consistent across the board at the top of everybody's list throughout the survey. And they were also pretty consistent across the board, the concerns the residents had when they came before the meetings we had in the fall. So it's very consistent. Now, item four there, which was the fourth highest, was preserving the transient rental revenue for the city. So I do think the residents and the responders realize that this does have a benefit. There's not just a negative to short-term rentals, there is a benefit, and that's the value to the city. So we have to find that balance, and that's kind of where we're going with this. And I would just point out, because I know it was somewhat of a hot-button issue in the fall and that the city was dealing with, which is number 10, okay? Ranking last on this list of importance is regulation of signage identifying short-term rental units. That finished 10th on the majority of respondents that we had. And it surprised me a little bit because it was such a vocal issue, there was such a vocal issue to that. But I just don't think that, you know, when the original idea and concept to put signage in the window, I don't know that the use of the internet, the use of being able to identify something and respond by cellphone was as prevalent. And I really think that that's the direction the city wants to go, is to be able to identify these online, which is much easier than rather walk up to the unit, look at the unit, and identify it. If we can identify it, easier either by geo-tagging them or having an accessible online means of doing it, that's the direction that we're heading. And just for the residents, I'm bringing up, these were six through 10, as far as order importance. So these were the bottom five on that question. So as we move to the next, if the number of short-term rental units are reduced, will you be willing to pay higher taxes? I'll grant it, this is, you know, this is a question nobody, everybody knew what the answer to this was going to be, right? Vast, vast majority, 70%, either somewhat disagree or strongly disagree. And we certainly, as a city, don't want to go that way. We don't want to have to look to try to replace this revenue. We want to try to come up with a way to find a happy medium and cap it. Next set of questions was, how would you like to see the city regulate short-term rentals in Avalon? Number one, pretty much far and away, 48%, in this question, you can respond with three. Three out of, we had 12 possible responses, and you can select your top three. So, the way we are looking at this is, how many times did that response finish in the top three? And that's what you see here, is set a cap for maximum number of overall units. 48%, almost 50% of the respondents had that in the top three. And then, it's a significant drop, it's still the saturation limit, which, the way I read it, is the same thing as a cap. It's just a saturation limit per neighborhood versus an overall city cap. So, those two issues, capping these were certainly the top response. And then you get into enforcement, revoking inactive short-term rentals, limiting the number per single owner, and some options of every new transient rental per person, they must have a long-term rental. So those were the top six. Again, we get into the bottom six on the next page. And, you know, you can see that, you know, 10, 11, and 12 are really having to do with enforcement, the 24/7 monitoring of complaints, and the quick response. Again, this surprised me a little bit because this was really what the city had heard, that we weren't getting, we didn't have a mechanism to quickly respond to complaints on weekends and after-hours. So, I think this is probably just a disconnect between the, because they want us to regulate them, but this is how we would regulate them. So we have to balance that, figure out how we're going to do that. And I still think that, you know, some of those options are probably the way that we'll look at going in the future. So, the next question is, you know, what do you believe are the top three concerns regarding short-term rentals? This was phrased slightly different than question number six earlier, but the responses were pretty consistent. So, again, we feel that the responses we are getting were from a majority of the residents, were from the majority of people that don't own short-term rentals, that this is how they're affecting them on a daily basis. This is how they're affecting where they live, their neighborhoods. And, you know, far and away, again, reduction of affordable housing and housing availability comes out as number one. So, where do we go from here? And I just kind of want to lay out what our plans are as a city for the next steps. Again, we're just dropping this information on you tonight. We're not asking for any decision in or any direction. What we want to do is come back to you in March, at your March meeting, give you an opportunity to consider the responses to this, consider what's already been said on short-term rentals. And we've had a little bit of a hiatus through the holidays and everything else on discussing the subject, so we want to get it back in front of you. We'll do that in March with the idea that we're going to bring concrete, solid proposals of, here's regulations that we feel are common sense regulations to adopt, to impose in the City of Avalon to control and govern short-term rentals. We believe that we heard planning commission in the fall regarding the issue of the cap, that they, that you feel that that's a council issue, that you've addressed your point of view, planning commission's point of view on the cap. We're more than willing to have that discussion again, but we're also more than willing to simply take the cap issue to council and let them determine how they're going to impose a cap, if they're going to impose a cap, and get planning commission's recommendations on regulations. We don't want to preclude you from that, but kind of consistently, what we heard in the fall was you felt that you spent a lot of time on that before, and then council didn't take any action, so you don't want, you're not sure if you want to go through that exercise again. If you do, we'd love to hear your opinion on it, if not, we understand. But I do think that council ultimately is going to have a conversation on the cap. I think that that has to be discussed. We have identified 361 short-term rentals in the city. We believe, I believe personally, that there is a tipping point to short-term rentals. They've certainly slowed down, but there is a tipping point. At some point, there becomes, you know, where it's excessive. I mean, if you look at, bear down in certain neighborhoods, you can say it's already occurring in certain neighborhoods. And I think that that's probably a fair conversation to have. So, we will, in March, bring those. If we need another meeting in April to further discuss it, we'll do that. We have a little bit of time until August of next, or maybe September, before we take any action regarding the moratorium. I'd rather take action sooner rather than later because our goal is to get legislation in front of council in probably second meeting, middle, first meeting, second meeting in May, to have them discuss it and have something in place by July 1st. So it gives us a little bit of time before the moratorium gets lifted. So, I would ask if there's any questions from planning commission of me regarding this at this point.
Do we have any questions? I think we've just got the information, so it'll take a little while to come up with one.
And then the only other, again, reminder, I know we have some residents here that, on oral communication, anybody that wants to have any comment or say anything, we do have a hard stop at five o'clock on this, so I'll remind you of forgetting bumping up to that point. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions here? Let's open this up and talk. Anyone wants to come up and speak for or against, or just stick your opinion, please come up. Stick your name and your address. Except if you get out of here earlier. Okay, I'll be in the door.
Hi, I'm Bree Bissard, I live at 360 Clemente, Apia Vista. And I guess my only question regarding this was, one of the questions that was on the survey was about revoking inactive short-term rentals and what that would mean for CUPs that are being banked. And if that would, you know, for people that are running their short-term rentals, I guess, out to residents right now, that have their short-term rentals banked, what that would mean in the long run, for, of those would be the ones that would be revoked? If that makes sense.
We have a couple of different options that we are looking to propose on those, that, you know, technically, there's nothing that says you're allowed to bank your short-term rental. If you're not, you're supposed to, you're required to use it a certain number of days per year, and if you're not, you're in violation and can lose it. However, as we move forward and discuss some of the options, one of the options that we have is that if an individual wants to bank their short-term rental, to have a mechanism to allow that to happen, if they have the CUP, and some options to encourage long-term rental of property, and allow you to bank a short-term rental if you're running out long-term.
Okay, yeah, my question is mainly for the CUPs. I know that there's the CUPs, and then there's the short-term rentals, and that that's a newer thing. So my question is more regarding the CUPs.
Yeah, the CUPs, I mean, technically, they're not banking or not, or otherwise, because they run with the property. So, if you're not using it, and there are people with CUPs that aren't using them. I mean, like I said, I think we've identified almost 70, 60 to 70 that aren't being used and probably being held on to for that very reason.
Okay.
Value to resell. Because you get one resale to use it, and then the second sale of that same property, it's lost.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That was my only question. Thank you.
I have a question on her question.
Certainly encourage that if they're using it for long-term rental? Because that's what we want to encourage.
Right.
But I think with the CUPs, that there's no action. I mean, the idea is that you have to have a certain number of days rented a year. But the reality of it is, somebody could send a check in for $12 and say, here's my, here's my TOT. I rented it, you know, for one day or whatever it might be, and we have difficulty proving or enforcing that. So some of those regulations on going forward, I think we need to look at.
Clean up.
Yeah.
I have one other question on the licenses now. Is how do we, how does staff keep track of sales? Because the CUPs used to just run with the land always, so it was just continuing. And so now, it's like, one sale, they get to have it, and then the next sale, it's, they can't use it. It has to be a license again. So, with sales now, how do you?
Well, the sales of the CUP.
Track of the license?
The sales impact the CUP, okay? Because the TRL, they come in, it's a license, an annual license that they get, and it's, but the CUP that runs with the land. We are, and finance department is trying to track that. I don't know, Matt, if you have any additional input on it, but they do track that and keep a spreadsheet on that.
Okay.
So where we get that record is actually with the county assessor. So that's how we track whether there's been a sale or not on a property with the CUP is using the county sales records.
Okay, thank you.
Leslie Turner, 306 Whitley, this was fascinating to listen to. I am absolutely in favor of a cap, and I think we're at about 25% right now of short-term rentals. But my question is, how is the city monitoring illegal rentals at this time? Because they seem to pop up, and I know you had some kind of a service that was monitoring that and moving forward, how will that, how will you regulate that? Thank you.
I'm sorry, the question is, how would we regulate whether or not somebody is licensed with the city that's doing it?
Right, right. I've called them in before, and so is there a fine, or do you just slap their hand? Or, and how do you monitor it? How are you catching them? Does this company that you've hired actually go on Airbnb and VRBO and all that and look for?
They do, they monitor all the short-term rental software companies and all the online companies to determine that. We, you know, finance department can get reports of if something is popping up that doesn't match our records, and then they can make a determination of, you know, does it reach the level of, do we, is there enough inconsistency that it looks like it's being rented for us to investigate further? I think really what we have done here, the first round of terminating some of these licenses and CUPs we did was really the easiest ones, the short, the low-hanging fruit that just weren't paying their license fee, weren't renting, weren't paying taxes, and we went after those and cleared out, you know, maybe 10 to 15. The next level is going to be, that we'll be bringing the planning commission going through the process, are the ones that just, we feel are not reporting, that are actually renting out without reporting and being registered with the city. And we'll be able to identify some of those. And then some are just, the next level will be people that are registered with the city, but maybe under-reporting in some of the statistics we have, because those will be tougher to capture. And Matt, I don't know if you have anything additional to add, how our system works, but...
Well, and that is why the signage, in my opinion, is so important, right? And the license number posted on that signage, as well as on the Airbnb and VRBO listings. Because maybe they make up a fake one, I don't know, but I think it helps we as neighbors to be clear whether it really is a vacation rental or not. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak?
Hi, thank you very much for your time tonight. My name is Bobby Hayer, and we are building a home in Hamilton Cove at 415 Altamista. It's been a pretty long and arduous process. This has been going on for over seven years. And we actually got married here on the island back in 2003. And it's been a dream of ours to build a home here in Catalina so we can spend a lot of time here with our family. Unfortunately, we did not find out about the moratorium until literally the day that the moratorium was passed. We came into the city, we were in, speaking with them, I found out about it. We filled out the application, and our builder was going to bring back a check that afternoon. And unfortunately, he didn't bring it back for two days. And therefore, we were knocked out and are unable to rent the home when it's completed. And we're not looking to be renting it out constantly, but it's a little bit to supplement, to help, you know, pay for the home as well. So I guess my question is, is there anything that can be done to speed up the process or have exceptions? You know, we're not here to cause problems. We would like to follow any rules and regulations that are needed and in place. But I don't believe it's fair that the process that we've been in for such a long period of time, and now that we missed it by a day or two, we are going to be excluded from being able to do it. So, again, my question would be, is there anything that can be done for specific circumstances?
I guess I would answer at this time that while the moratorium is in place, no. But as far as the moratorium will be lifted, once we, planning commission and ultimately council adopts, you know, what I believe are probably going to be pretty common sense regulations. We're not looking, I hope, we're not, the city's not looking to do away with short-term rentals, okay? That would be a very difficult process, a number of different fronts. We understand that many people have purchased homes relying somewhat on that ability to do that. So, you know, we're looking at some common sense regulations on these versus doing away with them. So while it's inconvenient for people that fall into this position now, and whether, you know, the fact that this hits you by a day is, yeah, that's tough. We've had people that, you know, have come in and said, yeah, I missed it by a month. And at some point, the line was going to be drawn when the moratorium was put in place. But I hope that ultimately, the answer isn't that they're capped at where we are, that there's going to be some little bit of breathing room there so we can operate both adding a few to the city, and then as we remove some, it's going to open up space in that cap. Because I do believe that there are some people that are just hanging on to these or have these registered that aren't using them, and maybe have no intention of using them. And if we do what hopefully that I would propose, that I think can solve a couple of the problems, increase the annual fee that it'll do away with a lot of those, and open up some space. So, I hate that the answer is just sit tight for a little bit, but the quicker we can get this back to planning and to council and to get the moratorium lifted, then we can move forward.
What's the percentage of housing stock right now that's vacation rental?
Like I said, we have 361 registered, and of those 361, I would say about 290 to 300 are active. I don't have the number of the overall, I do have... I don't have the number and, of the overall, I do have it somewhere, but I don't have in front of me the num, overall number of residential units in the city.
Be an interesting number to know.
Can you hear it was twenty-five percent at some point, like Leslie said? I thought I heard that when we were going through this before.
Yeah, I don't necessarily disagree with Leslie, not Leslie's numbers. I think there might be about that neighborhood. But, but I'd have to look to see how many overall, do you, Matt, do you know how many overall residential units we have? At one point, we had that number.
I, I could go to my office and find out. I, I want to say it's around fourteen hundred, so the twenty-five percent's probably, probably pretty close. I just don't know if that also includes commercial or not. There's not that many, at least from a parcel count, that many commercial relative to a residential. So I think, you know, as a, as a ballpark figure, fourteen hundred is probably reasonable. So the twenty-five percent's probably a reasonable estimate, but I can get the exact number in five minutes, but.
So it's kind of hard when you have, you said there was about sixty that are, aren't being used?
We feel there's at least sixty, it might be a few more than that, so.
So then when you have that number, it's really not an accurate number to what is actually being used as a vacation rental? And it, I think we need to definitely address that, so that we can take those out of the equation.
Some of those would be those bank CUPs.
Yeah, or some, but take it out of the whole, to get a true accurate.
So what, what those sixty are individuals that pay for their business license each year with Finance, but don't report any TOT to Finance? We do review the, the, using the software that, that was previously discussed. We do check Airbnb, VRBO, just to, to validate that those aren't being rented, and then at least it doesn't appear, based on postings on those sites, that any of those sixty or seventy that we're talking about are actually being rented anywhere. But they do go through the, the exercise of, of paying for the business license each year with Finance.
What would be interesting to know is if of those, you know, those CUPs that aren't being used the way they're supposed to be used, how, what, how many of them are actually being used for year-round rentals? Or how many is just being left open?
And that, that's something we could look at, and it's a good, I guess, point to bring up. Technically, all year-round rentals should also be a, getting a business license, but if you're around running against, we do have some ability, we could check it against the commuter subsidy database or the vehicle database. So we could check to see if those, how those are being rented, or if they're, how they're being lived in. But my, likely they don't have, a lot of our year-round rentals don't have business licenses.
Well, that's the thing, the illegal ones that are harder to find, but.
The illegal ones definitely are harder to find. Um, but the, the nice thing about the site is if they're using Airbnb, VRBO, or kind of one of the major, I think there's fifty or so equivalent sites that, that our service scans for, that, you know, the, the ones that are, you know, posting on Craigslist or a Facebook post are tougher for the system to catch. But if they're using a legitimate third-party website to, to host through, we, we typically can catch those.
And Matt, I think our position is we don't think there is a tremendous percentage of illegal ones out there because of that. I mean, it's just.
No, I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm sure there are ones that, that fall through the cracks that, that, you know, have evaded capture. But the vast majority of, of the rentals have a license and then pay the tax. So I, I'm not saying there can't be some illegal ones out there, and we'll definitely do our best to catch those. But I think the majority of them have a business license. And then, you know, whether they're reporting the full amounts and other question, and there, there's plans and Finance to go after those as well, so.
I would definitely like to know the information on those sixty-plus units, if they're renting them to residents of the island, that would be.
We could have that for the next meeting.
That'd be great.
Definitely.
Thank you, Matt.
And on a planning basis, it would make sense. This, this is the first step. Our transient rental licenses is a small piece of what we need to do as planners. We also need to know what is our targeted year-round, or visitor population on the island? What number is that? How many of those, let's, let's grab a round number, let's grab a million visitors. Our intention is to get a million visitors a year. Of those million visitors, how many need to be overnight stays? Of a million visitors, what size of landfill do we need to provide service to those million visitors? At what level of service and restaurants do we expect? That will extrapolate our housing needs. That'll extrapolate how much water we need. So we need to take a step back from this as planners and determine what those numbers are, what those intended numbers are. Some of that can be gathered historically, but that may not be the intention of the community. The community may decide ten years from now that they want to be a retirement community. So those, we need to back off a little bit and create some more questions to develop better answers. If your target's a million visitors a year, how many spots on the Catalina Express need to be available to those travelers and local travelers? More questions?
I mean, I, I think the number of visitors, at least I've seen consistently going back ten, fifteen years, has been a million. I mean, that, it's gone up and down a little bit seasonally and with weather, but for the most part, that's the number. And Jim's here, and he could probably speak to that more in detail. But I, I think that is a accurate number. Of not, not necessarily what the city is anticipating, but who comes here? I mean, whether the city anticipates it or not, I think you're getting a million every year.
Say it to you, Jim.
Really good points, Bob. I thoroughly appreciate that. We have had a goal of trying to support incremental growth in visitation of around three percent pre-COVID. What the world has done in, in no demand, over, over demand, and now back to maybe more of a homeostasis, we're, we're looking like we're right back to that million, million-two a year. But not nearly all of those folks are staying, staying overnight. And in fact, as the cost of visiting the island goes up, for whatever other reason, the hotel rate, the vacation rental rate, the boat cost, we actually see a push toward more day tripping. And in some of the most recent monthly numbers, that's been very evident. Another interesting trend, if you look at our monthly reporting, or especially the December year-end reporting, the short-term rental unit occupancy, and that's not making the distinction CPU versus STR. It's just using the industry term for STR. Saw double-digit growth for the year, while hotels only saw single-digit growth for the year. So we have also the tra, the traveler trend of how they want to stay and what they want to do when they come to the island. So I don't know that I answered anything differently, but shared a little more insight that I would see across my desk every day.
I think you see more families travel using vacation rentals than you do hotels. Because you have to rent two or three hotel rooms to get your family in there, where you could rent a vacation rental, and, you know, if your family's five and you have a two-bedroom, you could do it, so.
For sure.
Any more from the public of this issue?
I just saw in the paper that LA County has denied all transient rentals in incorporated, unincorporated parts, which are several cities. And they were doing it with a nine-hundred, almost a thousand-dollar fee to apply to, you know, if you wanted to get a permit. And I was just thinking, that's so cheap from our standpoint, that, but is there a, a sort of kickback idea that since we charge more like three thousand for the fee to apply, that does the commission feel in, like they really have to okay the rental because that's so expensive? Or can you go to what LA County was going to do, or has done, I guess, in the past, is charge that nine?
It's not annual, and it's extremely cheap. After that, it's fifty-four dollars, I believe, for the annual license, which again is embarrassingly cheap.
When you say extremely cheap, it's thirty-two, thirty-three hundred dollars to apply for a CUP for that owner to give you twelve percent of everything they owe. I mean, I don't see that as extremely cheap.
Well, I guess, I guess my point from the city's standpoint is the cost we pay for our annual service to monitor these, the staff time that it takes, the staff time that it takes for code enforcement to monitor them, and to make sure that not only that individual one, but all of them are in compliance with the regulations. All of that adds up very, very quickly. So, you know, with the numbers that we see, and I, I guess, I mean, it's inexpensive for the revenue generated for the, potentially for the property owner, not necessarily cheap. But our annual fee, once you do that, is, is just the license fee, which is less than sixty dollars a year. And every year, we, the city, have to monitor these and make sure that they're in compliance, and, and that's the difficult part. It becomes more and more expensive every year to do that.
It seemed like it would make sense to do an annual up the fee idea, but.
Yeah.
Would the, would the twelve percent bed tax not have anything to do with that?
Well, I think the difference is the hotels are paying a twelve percent bed tax too. But the hotels also hire staff, and they have employees, and they have housing for those employees, and they, they do all of those things in providing employee housing that the short-term rental owners do not do. The hotels, the hotels have significantly higher expenses in order to maintain those rooms for their same twelve percent that the short-term rental owners don't, don't pay because of the nature of the business.
Does the short-term rentals, because they're a business, essentially a hotel, do they get audited like hotels do?
Only if we, we have the ability to do that under the code, if we find a discrepancy in what they're reporting. Yeah.
But I know, I'm, I'm sure the vacation companies who have the businesses, but I'm just saying, like, there's, you know, people who have two or three homes.
It's all the digital stuff that's.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't believe we're auditing three hundred and sixty of them a year, where we wait to see if there's a discrepancy.
I mean, formal audits, no, we typically, or at least my time at the city, have focused on the hotels. That being said, our software does have the ability where they can come up with an estimate of what they think, given the, the time period is, what they think a hotel or what a vacation rental should have generated in tax. And so, you know, I do have an estimate or a range. So part of the discussions is there's a few properties we've identified already that report considerably less than what the, the range estimate by our, our software is saying. And so we do have the ability, but we haven't audited under-reporting in the same way we have with hotels.
So you kind of have like a flag type.
So we, we do have the ability, and that, that's part of the challenges, you know, with, you know, there's a lot of time involved with more formal audit. And in the past, we've contracted that out with other parties. And so, you know, I, I don't necessarily want to spend three thousand dollars on an audit that's only going to generate me three hundred in missing tax.
I know, I completely understand that, and I'm probably not going to be very popular. But I also want to say that I have been, from day one, I am a firm believer that vacation rentals that come up and get approved, they should be handled by like a vacation company and not individually, like my sister, say, running, you know, being the emergency number. I think we should tighten that up, because it's, I think that's where a lot of it goes wrong as far as enforcement, is if you have a company that is a property management company, that has people twenty-four hours, that has people that get up and go out there, instead of just, oh, my, my neighbor's going to watch the property, and here's the number. And, you know, and then things like that could be audited, because they're in a whole company that has all that information. And stuff like that can be audited easily, you know, and they're, you know, that's just part of more enforcement that might be able to tighten everything up as well in the long run.
And one of the challenges we do have with some of the individual reporting is, you know, Jim has asked for occupancy statistics, and, you know, our single reporters, you know, sometimes don't necessarily understand the forms as well as, as the larger rental companies do. And so we've had some challenges with our reporting.
I bet.
And I, I think Dave mentioned before, and one of the things we talked about would be requiring a business license for the person who's a twenty-four-hour contact. So that way you couldn't just put, well, you could still just put your neighbor, but your neighbor would have to go through the app.
But what is it, fifty dollars? I mean, like you said, so I mean, I, I just.
And so many of them are like, the maid that cleans it, that's the nighttime contact. You and I get in an argument in the middle of the night, we're yelling, screaming at each other. The maid coming up is not going to do anything where a company comes up and says, hey, guys, this is it, you're out, blah, blah, blah.
No question.
Thank you, Matt.
Leslie Warner, three zero six Whitley, I just have a thought about the CUPs that are not being used for vacation rentals. If you choose to take those out of the equation, then what happens when they want to do short-term rentals once again? So if, if you're at three sixty and you say, well, really, we only have three hundred vacation rentals, but then all of a sudden, those people need more money, or, you know, change their, their mind about things? I don't think you can take that number out. You have to keep it in as part of the total number of vacation rentals, and in considering your cap, because it could change just like that. So I, I would hope that you would really think hard about removing those from the equation, because they are part of the equation. Thank you.
Anyone else on this before we?
Hi, I'm Breeve Sard, I'm back again. I live at Bahia Vista, so I just wanted to kind of share a little bit of my input, given that we have about sixty places there, and I want to say out of everyone that lives there, there's maybe ten or fifteen of us that are there year-round. And I do think that it is, you know, quite difficult in the beginning, when we just had like CIVR that was overseeing a lot of these short-term rentals. It was a lot easier if there was a problem, to be able to call CIVR and have somebody come out and take care of that issue. But now that you have so many different people that are running them either individually, or you have all of these companies, there's no way for any of us to know who is running that particular unit. So in the end, if we have a problem, we have to, you know, use the sheriffs, and that's kind of a waste of resources as well. So I do think that it would be nice if it could be posted, because I do see that now there are postcards on every door. It would be nice to know who is dealing with these, because, you know, in summertime and everything, we do get fights and all kinds of stuff like that. You know, it would be nicer to be able to just contact one of these.
Well, I think the difference too is like if it's a, if it's a vacation rental company like my own, if I have a problem with someone, and I've had them say to me, what makes you think I'm, I'm going to come back? I go, you just don't get it, do you? You're not coming back, you won't be coming back and staying with me, because you've been nothing but a nightmare.
Exactly, and, and that's where I'm a little fortunate, where I know a lot, yeah. Exactly, and I'm fortunate where I know a lot of the owners there. So if I know the particular unit, usually I know who the owner is, and I can let them know that, hey, this was really problematic. Because half the time, they have no idea, you know, about that.
Please don't bring these people back.
Exactly, you know, just, you know, there were fights or what have you, you know, a lot of other issues. But otherwise, I mean, I have no problems with it, it just, it's nice to know who is in charge of that unit. Because we don't, we have a maintenance person, we don't have, you know, a person there that is going to go door-to-door. So, you know, if it's CIVR, it would be nice to know that, hey, I can call CIVR, this is, you know, an issue, instead of having to waste resources and contacting the sheriffs. But again, also, if somebody does have a CUP, and I know I kind of already brought that up, but if somebody does have a CUP and they are running it to year-round to locals, I do think that that's unfair to take those ones away if they are not using them for anything other than long-term, you know, rental usage. However, I am absolutely for a cap on the rentals as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I do, I just want to say, I know, I appreciate that we've been moving this along, but we cannot even start the, the public hearing on the next item till five, because that's what we advertised it for in the paper. So that's why we did this before, so we have the cutoff at five, but we can't start earlier than five.
So I just have a quick question. So the moratorium ends in August, right?
I, I don't know the exact date, but yes.
Okay, so what is the deadline that we have to move forward? I mean.
I mean, like I said, the goal would be, we bring it back to planning, to you guys in March, at your March meeting, with some specific recommendations you're recommending body to council to adopt. If you're in a position to do that going, coming out of the March meeting, we'll do it. If not, we'll schedule it, schedule it to continue into April. As long as we get it to council by May, we can have it in place.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's, that's what we're shooting for.
So, I have a question. Um, I, I really like the comments about the Airbnb should be through a company here on the island opposed to, like, Airbnb and all of the, the third parties. I just think that's a great idea altogether, but how would we go about doing something like that? Or is that a planning commission or a council?
I, I think the point was that the management would be through an on-island representative, but you could still advertise on Airbnb, but the, the management would be on-island. The contact person and management of that unit would be here.
So is that something that we would be interested in looking into to make almost like a, in the, in the application?
Yeah.
Yes.
We have it now, unfortunately. It's not, it, it's part of it now, so we need, we need to beef up the enforcement of that.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that was something that long before me, somebody decided made a lot of sense and we have to enforce that.
Hi, Mike Owens, Hamilton Cove, seventy-nine, Comino de Flores, twenty-eight years. I'm not a good public speaker. The contact person, when you're talking about the, the game that people play, what we saw at Hamilton Cove, they put down maid as the after-hours contact. I think legislatively, you should do something with an ordinance. It has to be brick and mortar, has to be a local person. Because if you just say a contact person on the island, they put down the maid. They don't come out.
Now, he, he's, he's exactly right. And, and that's, that's what we need to beef up, is that that, and that's part of what Matt talked about, that we've been talking about having on-island property managers be licensed with the city, because that gives us a little more control to make sure that they actually have a business rather than... We've contacted people that didn't even know they were listed as on-island manager. They, they just didn't know, then they, their name was put down and, and they are the cleaning service or something like that. So it just.
That's not fair to the legitimate businesses that are operating.
Absolutely not. Yeah. Seven minutes. We can take a seven-minute recess or... Not sure if she's coming here or if she's coming.
Oh, it's, I missed it.
Oh. We're all waiting, we're all waiting on you there.
Hi, Lindsay Mattingly, one fifteen Olive Street. I am a long, long-term renter here on the island. I moved into my place twenty-eight years ago and have had a really good relationship with my landlady ever since. And it was, it's a wonderful place where I have a beautiful view of the harbor, so foolishly, I never purchased a place. But, Mike, my, you, the commission, you guys are the commission that's talking about all this? Is that, am I right? How many of you are renters? Okay, one renter. I have, had spoken to you before about the issue with the schools and the, and the teachers that are on a revolving door, coming and going because, you know, boating to the island is unsustainable. So, we've had very few teachers that last very long, which is, really makes it difficult to develop a culture at the school. That's one thing. Another thing, I have friends who just look and look and look for a place to live. And a friend who lived here ten years said she's lived in eight different places. So I just wanna make sure that you guys have empathy for those people. And I'm glad that we have one renter on the commission. And I know some of you have children that may have had difficulty finding places, but it really is, I know you, we think, you know, we're a tourist community and we need to provide places for the people to stay here, but you need to really consider the schools and all your workers. All my ex-students, a lot, many of them have to leave the island because they can't find a place to live here. They were raised here, they would like to stay here, but it's very difficult for them. So just consider all those things. I'm sure you've heard these things from other people, but I haven't heard it discussed this evening at any point in time. And so, I want you to have a little love for renters.
Like, we have love for renters, but the school caused some of their own problems because they fired teachers that were here on the island, living year-round with housing to bring the teachers over from the mainland because of seniority.
That was a long, long, long time ago. That was in two thousand eight when the whole.
But it wasn't, we didn't have the transportation of all the teachers all the time they lived.
The, the whole economy failed and the district had no, no way to, to change that. And I know, I was team teaching with Brenda Haves and I had to see her leave and it was tough. But a lot of the teachers that came over in that first round did find housing and they stayed for many years. But the latest group, it's just gotten more and more difficult. And it, I don't think anybody recently has been fired that lived here. And so, I think that's a really old story that is not really that true anymore, but that there is other things happening at the school that I, I understand that the teachers leave. But really, getting up at, catching a six o'clock boat and catching a three forty boat, I have a hard time doing that once a week.
Well, I have two kids up at the school and so many of those teachers, you can't talk to them after school because they're gone.
Well, yes, and, and, and the teachers that.
We have teachers here that had those positions, but because of seniority, were let go to take these ones from the mainland, so that's kinda tough.
When, when was that?
This would've been back, oh, ten, fifteen years ago.
Yeah, so I'm saying that that's not happening anymore. You know, they're not, they're not firing people who live here.
No, but there's still, our teachers commuting.
Oh, yeah. There are teachers commuting and they, they come and they stay for a couple, well, I think the maximum, Dave Markowitz probably was one that did it for the longest amount of time. But he had a place he stayed anytime he wanted. He rented a room from a friend. And the lady, I had a friend who stayed with me every week. And she lasted for six years, Tina Newhart. She came and spoke to the city council. And, but other than that, I, you're not gonna find, well, John Bragg. He lasted forever and he was the first one that ever started it. But there's a very few teachers that really, if you wanna think about it, that really have hung in a long time. And the ones that have had a place to stay. And that's, you know, when there's a, a teacher's meeting, they have to catch the seven o'clock boat at night, you know? So my friend knew she could stay with me. She knew if she missed her boat, she kept clothes at my house. She knew if she missed her boat, it didn't matter, she could just spend the night with me. I made her cook dinner for me, but. And so, so, you know, you have to keep in mind, I don't know, if part of the money that you collect for the Airbnbs could be for a couple of, of apartments that are just available for teachers that, that, that commute, that can spend the night if they have to, I don't know. I, that's, we've, I know the city manager told me, he had asked the district, why don't you guys buy some apartments? And they go, we don't do that. So our, our problem is, is that they don't have any sympathy for a rural school in a huge school district. They have no knowledge. I, I taught in a, in a very small town in New Zealand many years ago and there was teacher housing there. And almost every small school in New Zealand had a couple of apartments for teachers and that's how they ran things. But our school district isn't gonna do that. But anyway, just to add that to your idea of all the decisions you're making, kinda keep that in mind.
Chairman Glass, it's five o'clock now, so I, I would just, I would just, I would just wanna announce to everybody that as soon as the, the planning commission meeting is over, we do have to empty out council chambers for security reasons for Congressman Garcia. So we're gonna ask you to leave as soon as, as soon as the meeting's over, so if we can go forward. Thanks.
So the second item on, I have a conflict of interest because I sold the property. Originally, I was a listing agent, so I'm gonna step out. Chair.
Can we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, commission. This is Kelly Aruboffo, contract planner. Project before you this evening is a request for a site plan review and a variance for a six-foot-tall wall and fence at three-three-five Wrigley Terrace Road. Commission originally saw this project back on, at the December meeting, where the request for the variance was for a six-foot-tall solid masonry wall as well as carport trellises for two existing autoet parking spaces. At that meeting, the commission voted to deny the project based on findings and conditions related to the potential, the incompatibility of the proposed development on the site and the potential to have negative impacts to views along Wrigley Terrace Road that would be not in compliance with the city's general plan or findings for a variance. The applicant representative Fine Line Construction did appeal that decision to the city council. City council heard that appeal at the January eighteenth meeting. They did vote to deny that appeal and as part of that denial, asked the applicant to, or to staff to send the decision on the project back to planning commission, in part because as part of their appeal, the applicant had proposed two new designs for the wall that really encompassed feedback from both staff and planning commission that they had received during that December meeting. So the application before you today has been revised to provide two new plan options for the wall that include a forty-two-inch solid masonry wall at the bottom with a wrought iron fence design on top of that for a total of six feet in height. The two options, Plan, described as Plan B, would be the one that is entirely wrought iron above the original, or the base wall. An option C is the wrought iron interspread at a twenty-foot interval with stucco posts. Staff has reviewed the revised designs against the standards to make a site plan review and variance finding and do believe that the new designs proposed both can, are consistent with the feedback received by planning commission and will not constitute an issue related to view or incompatibility in design with the proposal. Staff is specifically recommending that Plan C, which is the one with the stucco posts, is the one that is kind of most, has the most cohesive design and is compatible with the existing design of the residence. Staff has provided you a recommendation of approval for the project specifically for Plan C and has proposed conditions of approval to make sure that the final design of the wrought iron elements has to be approved by staff prior to building permit to make sure it is consistent with the general design that's been proposed. And that the proposed gates for the carports would also need to be that wrought iron see-through design. So again, to keep the openness of the, of the proposed project design. The applicant's representatives, the owner of Fine Line Construction is here to answer any questions that you might have, and I'm also available for any questions. Thank you.
I have a question, or a couple. There's a pergola mentioned, two pergolas, no information on those. And then it talks about the, the gates are talked about either eight feet or six feet or open in different ways, but especially if two pergolas, no information, that's a lot of something extra.
So based on the original design, the two pergolas would be a maximum height of nine feet. They would be wood pergolas and would have an open, again, open trellised top, so they would not be a solid roof. The applicant did not give specifics in the new design related to the gates in terms of what the material is, which is why as part of the conditions of approval, we're recommending that they should match the wrought iron that would be used for the rest of the wall and that that final choice of material would be with staff to make sure that there's a consistent design throughout the project.
So we don't have any design or any pictures of what that pergola would look like?
Or sizes?
They were included in the original application that you saw. I apologize. From December sixth, that design is still the same. So they have not proposed any change to that based on what you saw the first time.
Did you say nine feet?
It was eight or nine, I'm sorry. I thought it was nine, but it might be eight. Let me double check.
I, I, my memory's like not really good, but there's already a pergola, there's already a carport with.
Not an over, not a pergola, nothing overhead, just.
Neither existing carport has any cover on them right now.
Okay. I just don't remember what it looked like the last meeting.
No, Yoli, it's just basically a notch out with walls about that high with a brick in between them. Just wants to make something. Oh, and Brian Tucker, Fine Line Construction, by the way. And the, the idea, I think, for the, for the gates, for the pergola, is going to be, as you view the wall and you would see the solid wall at the bottom, you see the iron on the top, is to bring that design across both sides. So it looks consist, so everything looks consistent and even, so. So it's not gonna look out of place. I do, I do have a picture of the pergola, if you guys don't have any, I'll see it.
It's in our packet.
Oh, it is?
I missed it, okay.
No. So what's the pergola, is it gonna be wood?
Yes. Wood, and I think the most common, the top is, people use the term lattice because they automatically think it's open, that's what it is. It's going to be larger pieces of wood than those little skinny lattice.
Well, that's, I mean, that's the definition of a pergola. It's got, you know, the slat, this, that, or the other, but something, but not at least fifty percent of the.
Oh, yes.
But if it's nine feet high, that's, and everything else that sits, that's quite a structure.
Yeah, I wanna say it was eight feet tall.
It was eight feet.
Yeah, I wanna say it was eight feet. Yeah, you couldn't get under a six-foot deal, that's why it has to be taller, obviously, so. But I, but I think that the gates themselves wouldn't be any higher than that. Again, it's just like, whatever line we establish with that wall slash wall slash iron on top, we wanna just carry that across to both of the gates.
So there are gates on both sides of the wall?
The gates are gonna be on both sides of the wall. Now, the gates are going to be retractable, they're gonna open into the property. Nothing will open out to the right way.
And that would be approved before, I mean, it's not just.
Ri- right, it's, it's my understanding that we're just trying to get the, the wall designed, to just get the rough design established here. Then when we come up, we're gonna have to draw plans, obviously. They're gonna have to run through planning administratively and through building and safety as well.
That's what I mean, so it's gonna be, it would, you would come back and we would see that, because to be determined doesn't stay enough to me.
Well, I, I, and Kelly, I mean, when we, when we say come back, I think it, after this, we're, you know, as far as the design goes, we're looking at administratively, correct?
So the intent of staff's recommendation is that you're, you're seeing that, you know, what is going to be wrought iron, what is gonna be stucco, what is gonna be posts. But as far as final material choice, like, is that wrought iron gonna have, you know, a twisted profile or square profile? That, that's not as critical to the findings that you're making and we would recommend that you would give staff the opportunity to make that final design choice with the property owner as part of the building permit. So we wanna know exactly what we're gonna, exactly what we're getting before the building permit is issued, but having that, that fine level of detail for your decision isn't necessarily as critical. You're really looking at amassing the overall material type and what that findings are gonna be for the variance in the site plan. Part of the reason I feel comfortable making that determination is that a large part of my personal professional background is design review. So I would be the person who'd be working with John Gilbert to make sure that the final design is approved and that it is compatible with the existing materials and design of the house. Obviously, that means you're trusting me and staff, you know, staff generally to make that final call. You know, it is your decision as planning commission whether you're comfortable with that, but that is why I'm making that recommendation.
Well, it's several points in here, it's mentioned, you know, that this goes with the existing architecture and this and that. Well, if we. Well, if we go to wrought iron and masonry, that looks great, and Plan C looks great, but then you're going to have a pergola, which we have no clue, and if you're using, you could use lattice, you could use small strips, or you could use, you know, one-by-fours or something, you could use all sorts of things, heavier, and you're going to have to have something to hold it up, and you're introducing wood to something that there's no wood anyplace else. So, you know, you're introducing one whole other design element.
There is wood. He did, they have, there's wood beams throughout the project.
From, visible from the street? I haven't been inside, but the street...
Yes, there's one that you, as you stand down, you look down, yeah, there's one visible from the street, yes. I mean, he wants it to look nice and consistent with his house. It's his goal to make everything look uniform, so the owner's going to, I mean, he's going to do this first class. It's going to look very, very nice. He's not going to do anything that...
I, I mean, I see the Plan C that the staff is recommending, and I just have a quick question. I didn't know that, I mean, they're recommending the wall and then the on-C, the wrought iron. I didn't, I just have a, maybe it's a weird question, but I never, ever have heard staff in the ten years that I have been on this dais, request like the type of wrought iron or how it is or in the design, because I didn't think we were like an architectural committee. So that's why I was like, when you guys, when you were saying that you had to approve the wrought iron, can you explain to me why?
Really, it's just making sure that the ultimate material chosen is consistent with what your expectations are. So it's like, we don't, we don't have to get into the specific granular design details, but, you know, you're expecting wrought iron, so we don't want to end up with glass. We don't want to end up with bright, bright steel finish.
No, I get it, and that's, and that's what it says here, and that's what, if we approve it or make a recommendation to approve it, that's what I assume will be, so when, I was just confused when you were asking about them coming back with the design on the wrought iron. I thought, I didn't know that that was within our capacity of making decisions. I didn't know that.
Technically, there's a bit of leeway in the site plan review standards, you know, depending on how important those elements are to the compatibility of the project with what's around it. In this case, it did not feel like it was, getting to that specific level of detail really isn't your main to the findings that you're making, which is why I did not ask them to get to that level of detail. It could make more sense if it were a much more, maybe in the middle of town, on front street, we might want to have that level of detail, but in this case...
Well, I, this is just good information to know, because like I said, I mean, there's a lot of properties on the island that are like older properties that, you know, get remodeled and stuff, and I just didn't know that we had that power, because we weren't an architectural design committee, so...
We don't really have the power to say what they use, other than...
You can't, you can't impose a specific architectural style, but you can certainly look at the details of the plans that they are proposing.
And the material?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I never opened that hearing, so I'm opening it.
So it's in the background?
None of that counted.
Well, Brian came up, so I was like...
Well, now we got about a minute left, that works out just right.
Are any more questions for Brian? Or? Okay, so close the hearing. Any more questions for staff, or a recommendation, or a motion?
I'm going to take a motion.
Do we need to make two? Do we need to go on issue one and issue two, or are we just doing...
You do not. You would be making a motion on the resolution, which includes the findings for both applications. Correct.
I'll make a motion that we adopt staff recommendation for the findings for the site plan, adopt the findings for the approval of the variance, that we find the project within the twenty-twenty-three growth policy, and find that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA, and as recommended, go for Option C generally. Yeah, that's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. I'll go to a vote.
Okay. Chairman, Vice Chair Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewer?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam? Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
We have six ayes, Scott, and one abstain. Motion passed. At five sixteen.
So we have fourteen minutes left?
Kind of. I told them they can get in here by five fifteen, hopefully.
But Clark comes in more quickly.
I'm glad we were able to help you.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
We did not approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
We'll do it in three minutes.
More business?
No more business, nothing else.
We'll adjourn. Tony?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.